Alright, good morning, or good afternoon, folks. We're ready to get started. Like the call order, Lafayette Township Board of Trustees in Fire District. Today is Monday, October sixth, six thirty P M. The notice requirements of section one twenty-one point twenty-two of the Ohio Revised Code and the implementing rules adopted by the board pursuant thereto were complied with for the new pro-call. Peroli here, O'Neal there, Fordson here. We can all stand for the question, please?
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America. Into the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, uh, first up is a meeting minutes pending approval, uh, July seventh.
Um, I sent my edits to you guys today, it's kind of light up, I'll get a chance to fill them out for now.
Are they different then? I mean, we kind of discussed them briefly.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, I had red, red marking on my scan of the edits. I had to redo them. July seventeenth, right?
Yeah, so I did seven, four, eighteen, last move. You just have the two edits, it looks like, or three?
Oh, I know.
The seventh, July seventh, the first page.
No issues with those.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion to approve, um, July seventh.
I'm going to approve July seventh, regular meeting minutes.
I'll second. All who's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, July seventh approved, uh, August fourth. Chris, I saw that you had some changes on that as well. Um, I had, Justin, just let me know if you find that one.
Yeah, yeah, okay, you got it, okay.
Um, Chris, you had wanted to take out a point, uh, a whole sentence. I'm not sure why, I could maybe assume, but I don't really want to do that. So if you can explain why you wanted to take the sentence out, what did Trustee have stated? It was on, uh, six, six page, I think.
Yeah, I know, and up, up until that page, I just asked for corrections for, asking the side replacement company. But yeah, this one, um, is discussing a subpoena received by the board. And the subpoena was from, if it's the one I'm thinking, I mean, it would be, it's not detailed in there. It should be from like April, March or April of twenty-four. Um, and I do recall Justin talking about something, but I think it's a conversation, I think. Yeah, and this at least refers to a separate conversation. I just, if we keep that in there, we should put it in a different, different location as well.
Okay, just move it to, maybe move it to the bullet point on its own, as opposed to being in that conversation?
Yeah, yeah, move it down underneath the, the, the last, uh, open bullet item, make it a dark bullet item.
Yeah. That works.
With the plot though, you know how it gets a little, go deep. And I don't want to add verbiage, obviously, it's a mess, but should we put press easy, say deference to something? Or, I mean, whatever the board wants to prove, or just make a different bullet point, it don't matter.
I think either one is perfectly fine.
You, you read the subpoena, I don't think it was that meeting.
I, I don't think so, I think it was a, it was a prior meeting that we talked about.
Yeah. Just saying in reference to a separate issue discussed by Trustee Pearl and Pressy's meeting.
So what you want to do, then just take that bullet point and just make a whole new one?
That's fine, move it down like right before public comment, make it its own main bullet point.
Right.
And then your other edits look like they were just correcting some ones.
Yeah.
Yeah. Trustee Fullerton, do you have any edits?
No, I don't have.
That I, I will move to approve the August fourth regular meeting minutes with, uh, Trustee O'Neal's edits.
Edits.
I'll second.
All who's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. August fourth approved, um, August eighteenth.
Yeah, the, the only one I had on that one was regarding warrants. Specifically.
Yeah, no, no, I, I mean, I don't care if you want to add that clarification, that's perfectly fine. Um, it doesn't change anything that was done. You know, the, the vote was the vote, the motion was the motion, if you want to add that clarification, I've, I've got no issue with it.
I guess it goes back to my first point, adding clarification should be put in.
We could.
A note in there, you know what I mean, just clarity or something.
Yeah, and, and it can, since it, we can take, uh, Trustee O'Neal's comment, just as it isn't even put, you know, post-meeting edit, Trustee O'Neal, clarification.
I, I referenced this, I discussed this in the meeting. I mean, it's not just despite of the meeting.
Well, that's true, we, we did, we did. Yeah, well, that's what I said, I have no problem adding it in there. I, I don't think it's adding any substantial what was discussed.
Right.
Okay, so you just want to add that?
That's, and that's the only one I had.
Right.
Okay, and that was, uh, August eighteenth.
I will, uh, move to approve the August eighteenth special meeting minutes with, uh, Trustee O'Neal's edit.
I'll second.
All who's in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, August eighteenth approved, uh, September fifteenth, I was not here, so we'll leave it up to you two.
Yeah, um. On the fifth page, and again, I think this is due to the plot, you know, maybe we skip around when we talk. We'll, we'll talk about one time, then we'll come back to it. The plot wants to put it in front of our orders.
Yeah.
Um, we had talked about the country club a little bit after talking about the, uh, the, the lots on Lafayette Road, and then we went back and talked about it, the Lafayette Road thing. So I would just say take that, that last, um, bullet item and put it on the next page. I'm sorry.
So wait, there's a, there's a, the section that you have, you're talking about the section that you have.
I would add this, put it on the previous page, right there, because it's, it's talking about the different.
Oh, I see what you mean, the, the, the bullet point that starts variance option.
Yes.
So just that lower section, I wasn't sure if you were talking about the whole.
No, because see, that, that was talking about the difference.
Yes, the variance option, uh, should go with the section under the math amount.
Yes.
Yes, agree.
I think that's the end, um, actually, the last page.
I don't have any other edits online, so with the very line, I, we did not.
Oh, correct.
To adjourn, and it was just to adjourn.
Correct.
Okay. Then I will, uh, move to approve the September fifteenth special meeting minutes with Trustee O'Neal's edits.
I'll second.
All who's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm satisfied, okay, motion carries, September fifteenth approved. Our, uh, consent agenda, everyone's gotten their reports.
Well, real quick, if, if we could, before we get to the consent agenda, I'm sorry for not doing it before the meeting minutes, um, but if, um, just trying to figure out, you know, we had, uh, previously the taxpayers paid for a camera for us to be able to record minutes, or record meetings, so to publish them online. And I noticed the last several meetings, that camera is now recording the audience and not the meetings. And I'm just curious, is that pointed to us as well?
Yeah, that was on the video recording.
Okay. Well, the camera recorded nothing but the front row of the audience for the August sixteenth. We, we, we got. Okay, so, so why are we not recording in the back?
Uh, we have one recording in the back as well.
As a private resident, it's recorded.
Yeah, doesn't recharge, I don't have a problem with that.
But why did we spend money on a camera to record meetings back there, and then all of a sudden switched to recording the audience? Last year, he was making several meetings, so he can call that one down the bottom line. Right, right, the board approved by, and we've always recorded in the back. And then starting after the July meeting, somebody made a decision to start recording the audience. And I'm just curious, since we never discussed it as a board, why we're doing that? And then also, um, why we're, do, do we, do we have any type of agreement where we have ownership rights to the video that Mr. Kyle is now providing for us to put on the website as the official video? Since we're clearly not using the video that's from the camera that the township purchased to record the meetings.
And every time he uploads our, our, our.
Do we have a written agreement that says that?
No, but it's common practice, that's been, for, done for years.
No, as a matter of fact, Mr. Kyle's recorded meetings for a number of years, but originally he refused to give them to the township, which is fine, it's his right, it's absolutely, he's here of his own volition doing that. I'm just trying to understand why we made a decision. Well, I'm trying to understand where the decision was made.
I think it better, it caps like the meeting, you can pick up better when audiences are talking and, uh, expressing, you know, their opinions on stuff.
Okay, so you made the decision to change for that, okay. Alright, alright, that's, that's all I had, um, go ahead, sir.
Well, you had consent agenda, uh, would you want to talk about consent agenda?
Well, I had sent information to the board. I think, um, you know, I, I don't want to speak for you guys, when, when you kind of started, when you, when you first, uh, became trustees in twenty-twenty-two, but I just kind of rolled in, and the consent agenda was kind of always something that we did to kind of expedite the process of approving the reports. Um, the reports had often included additional detail, um, you know, chief will routinely put in hiring, uh, not firing, but hiring and resignation recommendations, uh, purchases that may be made, Rick does the same thing with service. Uh, we've always treated approval of the reports as simply approving the reports, and then any actual formal actions of the board were always handled separately. After the last meeting, there was some confusion over whether accepting the fiscal reports included paying of the warrants, which we've always handled as a separate conversation. So I provided you guys with some additional research, and I think it's become pretty clear that the practice that we've observed previously, um, doesn't really meet the requirements of what a consent, consent agenda is supposed to be, um, and the way that it's done. There should never be any confusion over what is and isn't included in a consent agenda. Um, you know, so, the way that we implement it doesn't save any time because we ultimately wind up going through all of the reports individually. Um, so I, I mean, I, I just think at this point, to avoid any type of confusion, I mean, if there's confusion among the elected officials over what is and isn't approved in the consent agenda, I can only imagine what the residents, you know, and the taxpayers are, are taking away from that. So I, I would just scrap the use of a consent agenda completely going forward, and we'll just handle the reports individually.
Um, the first thing I thought of while you were talking, uh, is I would definitely encourage the board to have a, have a workshop on policy and talk about just, and put our concerns out on the table and, and come to a consensus on what's allowed, what's not. I just think that would be a good idea.
I would have no problem with that, but to clarify, Sherry, last month was the first time you, you included a payment list in the consent agenda, correct?
No, I thought, I thought I've done it since I started, honestly, I don't.
And Laura, Laura did it previously, so, so that's not, none of that was directly at Sherry? Because she's getting used to the new processes, it's just, you know, when you read through the consent agenda, the idea is to expedite the meeting so that simple, routine, regular, non-controversial items can be handled all at once. But at the same time, they should all be very clearly spelled out, and then everything, like if you handle routine resolutions or, or business in that nature, then they're included in the minutes and there are tired, so there's no confusion. Um, and like I said, it's, it's all about streamlining the process, but we ultimately go through all of the reports individually, so there's really no reason not to. Um, we also.
We save time in consent agenda, no, I mean, chief normally comes up and preservatives, or, or, rather, in order detail, but Lieutenant Markham normally does not, uh, service does not, zoning does not, will highlight things.
But it's, we have no policy. I share with you guys the case law that revolves around it. Um, it also states that, you know, because of the nature of the consent agenda and the fact that doing business that way could ultimately lead to the sunshine law violation. Any member of any board can remove any item without a second motion. So I guess what I'm going to use, we can absolutely workshop it, but I'm not comfortable using consent agenda. As is my right, I'm asking that each of those reports can pull off the consent agenda and handled individually.
Okay. I have no problem with that.
No, nor do I, I would still encourage workshop, though.
That's fine.
For reaching, should our schedule together, I think Sherry would be up to it. Yeah, fair enough.
It seemed to work for the first eighteen months, I was curious.
Because we always just accepted the reports, and then every actionable item was discussed and reviewed individually. This last meeting was the first one where it was, there was confusion over whether we approved the payment listing as the warrants or not. And, and again, that's not Sherry's fault, that's not what I'm saying here, it's just, you know, I did not review that the way that I would review checks going, I mean, it's, the, the payment listing is simply a vendor and a dollar amount. There's no, there's no verifying of invoices, there's no verifying of the invoices off, you know what I mean? Like, it just gives the vendor in the dollar amount, it, it doesn't give you the opportunity to, to verify that that's actually what we've been billed, billed correctly.
Was there a problem prior to that, though? We've got checks, uh, sitting there, and everybody had the opportunity to go look at them, the invoices, ever clicked to them.
Right, we got a chance to review them before we approved them, that's all I'm saying. It's like, and so this was, that's why I was not, was not expecting that that payment listing, absent the ability to read the checks and invoices, was approved or not. You know, it wasn't a process that we've ever done before, that, that's simply all.
Okay, well, this discussion there, uh, fiscal, Sherry?
I don't really have a whole lot to report on, except, um, things are just slowly progressing along. There's a lot of things that I just haven't been able to fix yet, so it's gonna take a while. I mean, I'm trying to, you know, like, I'm fixing somebody else's mistakes, I'm trying to keep up with what I'm supposed to be doing, that stuff that happened back in January, February, March, and April, May. So we're slowly getting a handle on some of it, but other than that, I mean, I, I just want to make sure at some point we discuss if we're gonna switch everything for sure to Westfield, so I can get checks ordered and stuff like that, but.
Oh, yeah, that was the whole intent.
I am, yeah, I know, so.
Uh, you do have some resolutions, though.
I do, there's, um, two. One is the amounts and rates for next year, for, for, for entomship, based off weddings and, um, taxes. And then the other one is supplemental and reallocation, um, resolution. So anytime you move money, whether it's within a fund or supplementing a fund by, which is actually a, an increase of a resolution, of, of a line item or fund, it's supposed to be done by resolution. So we had to move a bunch of money around when, um, I realized the last month that we had to redo the appropriations because it was overappropriated by about thirty-seven thousand dollars at that point. So we did that, and I sat down and I kind of went over where I see we're gonna run out of money in different line items. So those, unfortunately, it doesn't give you the name of the line item, it just gives you the number of the line items. So you have to hand, cross-reference your appropriations to that. But anytime there's a minus with the same number as, um, a plus, that is a reallocation, that doesn't change your fund amount of your appropriations, but if it's a supplemental, it does. So that'll just be one line item by itself, so if it just says like five hundred dollars, that means that was part of the supplemental part of it. It's just something that the audit looks at, when you get audited, they want to make sure that the board is aware that money was being moved around basically every day. So since it hasn't been done, I just took it all the way back to the beginning year and just ran a report for everything that was moved around and, and had it. Because Chris and I sat one Saturday for three hours, went over everything in the book, and because when I realized that she was overappropriated at that point, you guys did approve it as when we went through everything, but it was never sent to the county as an increase, there was no resolutions ever written. But she had justification in there, in the meetings, he went back to the minutes, he found where you guys said that, you know, you were gonna increase this or whatever. So she did that part okay, it's just the final step of passing resolution, he's taking it to the county, all the work. Anytime you touch the budget, up, down, left, or right, you have to go to the county, and it has to pass by your decision.
So with respect to resolution number seventeen, and it is a little bit out of order right now, that's, that's township side. We, we discussed this last meeting, all of the appropriations, new monies, that we had all approved in, in opening meeting.
Well, and we also did a resolution already to fix the appropriate, the total appropriations, that's been done separately. If I could just clarify, if I understood correctly, Sherry, so these are budgetary transfers between the accounts, so that.
Within an account, not between accounts.
Well, right.
Between line items.
Right, between line items. And in order to be able to make that transfer, the board is supposed to authorize it before it's done.
You can, but the, I mean, I've had, I've done it before in retrospect, and the auditor has no problem as long as it's been approved at some point. Because let's say by the time, like, I get a bill in and it's eight hundred dollars over what was appropriated, now if I don't pay, that's gonna be late in your, and per late fees, you can do it, they're fine with it as long as you pass some kind of resolution to recognize that there was a supplement made within that fund.
But it would be fair to say best practice.
Well, best practice is, but right now, there is nothing going on that's best practice, because I keep running into stone walls every time I try to pay something because there's not enough allocating. It's been going on, I mean, I found a couple things today, and like, there's just not enough appropriated in the line item for what needs to be paid out. When it's not your budget, and you're trying to fix what somebody else has done, and you have no clue what they have done, it's really hard to do my job, it is extremely hard. So I'm trying to do the best I can to get your bills paid, so you guys could have to pay late fees all the time, but when it comes down to it, as long as, that's why they don't care if you do it, like, retroactively, as long as, I mean, it shouldn't have went on for ten months, no. But it's been going on for ten months. So usually, that's usually something happens towards the end of the year where you start realizing you're a little bit under, there are usually utilities that are a problem, because, you know, most things fuck with you. And so, yeah, best practice would be to do it ahead of time, but that is not always the case, that's, so therefore, as long as you do it retroactively, you don't have a problem, as long as it's been approved.
So the fire and the township have supplemental and reallocation?
Yeah, the fire department only has reallocation, I believe, I don't think they have any supplemental.
That's what I thought, too.
Yeah, just the township side.
Is it, in just opinion, Sherry, is it, um, line items are just too tight of a number, or?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, if, when you're doing your budget, I mean, I always try to, like, utilities, I automatically always do my budgets. And that's what's so weird for me here, because I do my budgets everywhere else, everybody, and then we sit down and we talk about it like in a finance meeting. Because I honestly, at the end of the day, that's what my job is, to make sure your budget is a good budget without going over anything, but you guys kind of did it, and I tried to, like, follow what you guys were wanting to do, and I already knew at the end of that meeting, you were already way under what you were at now, and I'm thinking, I always increase my utilities by five to ten percent because it's, let's face it, utilities usually are going about five to ten percent. You know, and then you have to worry about the usage too, so who knows? So, yeah, I mean, it could be, that's, that's the whole reason for the supplemental, or, I'm sorry, the reallocation, they've changed the names, but, but, um, that's the main reason. And it usually happens towards the end of the year, like I said, because you, you know, you start seeing, like, your lights and gas and whatever, you spent more than you thought you were going to, because rates increased, or, but. At the end of the day, there's nothing wrong with the way you're doing it right now, as long as it's approved, that, that, you know. Because like I said, all the sup, they're more worried about the supplemental than the reallocation than anything, because that's supposed to be done by, uh, legislation. So that's what they're gonna look at, and they're gonna get dinged and not for doing that, but other than that, you're okay.
Well, thank you, Sherry, uh, for all of that information, uh. I would move to adopt, uh, resolution seventeen dash twenty-two-five in the township side, a resolution approving the supplementation and reallocation appropriations established from January one of twenty-twenty-five through September twenty-seven. You want to change that date to today, or do you have the twenty-seventh on?
I do, but I don't remember what I changed today, so we could, I'm sure I'll have to move more, so, I mean, even if we have to pass another one next month, I don't have to.
Well, we did September twenty-seventh.
That was the last time I changed anything.
We'll need to adjust that. Yeah, I, I think Kristen, um, talked that and reworked that.
What? Oh, yeah, I switched it on the original.
Yep. Second?
Yeah, the, there could be the.
Oh, oh, wait.
Oh. I will second the motion.
Pro-call, vote.
Peroli now?
O'Neal, yes?
Fordson, yes. Uh, Fire District is resolution nine, uh, resolution approving the supplementation and reallocation of appropriations established from January one, twenty-twenty-five through September twenty-seven, twenty-five.
And, and again, there's no, no new money's been appropriated, this is just reallocation.
Just out of curiosity, do you have a problem with reallocation?
I have a problem with approving them after the fact, when they're supposed to be approved before they're done. We, we, we set the, we set the appropriations, we've adjusted those, so the appropriations are good. Um, there's not supposed to be any reallocation without the discussion and a review of the board. That's just my opinion, but that's.
Well, no, no, and, and I'd love to take off too, but I, I appreciate Sherry highlighting this and, and talking what the county on, and coming to a resolution for it, so, um, her directive.
I will move motion to approve the resolution nine dash twenty-two-five, I do.
Second?
I'll second.
Pro-call, vote.
Peroli now?
O'Neal, yes?
Fordson, yes. All right, Sherry, um, what, we're on to, um, accepting, uh, the rates, uh, from the county. Um, amounts and rates for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six was submitted by the, by the county parliament office. I have the fire department, I'm sending the township over there as well.
Uh, you were talking about the, uh.
Accepting the rates, no, I just wanted to get these there.
She's.
Okay.
Sixteen, sixteen. Sixteen.
Well, there was a number confusion because I had number sixteen, but then didn't have to do sixteen for the, so I switched my sixteen to an eighteen.
For the contract, that, that, that should be up there, sixteen's the bottom.
I do have that one, we just have. Two of them are not there. But this is, I think this is the one that they're talking about, yes.
I'm not precise if you should be numbered correctly.
Township, uh, eighteen.
The only question I have on the one for rates and, um, rates and amounts is the actual resolution itself doesn't. We have all the language of dispensing the reading requirement, emergency resolution, one's gonna take facts, formal adoption, but there's nothing in the resolution that says what, what we're resolving. If you look at, um, the resolution for, uh, the one that we, the ones that we just did, it says to make provision, uh, section one is to make provision for the current expenses and other expenditures of said board trustees during the fiscal year, I mean, December thirty-first, twenty-five, which is attached here to, and a part here of, being the same or hereby set aside and appropriated for the several purposes which expenditure should be made for and during fiscal year. And there's just, there's no, there's no section on this resolution stating what we're doing, or that there's attachments. I think you'll need some sort of language on there in order for it to actually state what we're doing.
I've never had an issue with that, I've just always attached the original certificate that they give us to the resolution and file. It's always been sufficient, I'll be as, however you want.
You're just saying the resolution is. Well, just, it should, I, I think it should have something that says that there's, right, like, as it stands, and, and I, I know what you're saying, because the, the, um, the paperwork that the auditor gave us actually has a resolution that we could use in, but, but if you were to look at, at this, the way that it's typed up, somebody would read this, this could be seen as the resolution, it doesn't reference an attachment, it doesn't reference any, it doesn't reference this act. There just should be some section in it that says, just like the one that I just read, like, attached here to is this, and then you've got this. That's, that's all, it's a simple edit.
Yeah, well, let's just reference, uh, the resolution for the county. I'll stay for it.
That work?
Then anything else does?
Nope. All right. Well, I'm, we can do that, or we can just add a section on there that, that references attached here to is gonna, you know, say that, that, that is what we're gonna revolve. That's, that's all. And we're to add, we have the eighteen now? Well, it's my, my handout with sixteen, so.
Yeah.
So, so I'll make a motion to, uh, approve resolution eighteen, twenty twenty-five, uh, accepting the rates and amounts from the auditor.
Second.
I'll second.
Roll, call, vote.
Rollie, yes?
O'Neil, yes?
For two, yes. Okay, so same on Fire, uh, resolution eight, twenty twenty-five F D. We can add that same version.
And then the only question I had, Cherry, you can answer, um, on the rates provided, um, they do not list the levy for the bond fund.
I know, you asked me about that, and I said, that, I gave you to her, why should they not put it on there? The reason, the only thing I can think of is by the time you got it to them, and we, I, we had the reading, and by the time she contacted me and asked me about that, I don't know if it was too late for it to go on the original certificate, but they have it, I gave them, I gave it to them, but she didn't, like, re-submit a new original certificate.
And we can discuss later, but I wonder if, because like, I was looking at the, since you forwarded out the, uh, they've sent us the preliminary certificates, um, based on our carryover, we're gonna have enough money in the bond fund on January first of next year to cover the rental and interest payments. Ultimately, I mean, we don't have, like, we wouldn't have the collect, so I wonder if, would they have pulled it off because we have sufficient carryover in our obligations for next year?
I don't know, I mean, the only time that they usually don't put anything in is, like, some people tend to appropriate their entire revenue, which is insane in itself. So that leaves you no option for your original certificate for the beginning of the year, because you've expended everything, so you normally can't even do a budget at that point for the following year. But honestly, I, I mean, I could call Kristen and ask her, I don't think that's the case, but.
Well, I mean, the certificate you sent us, the preliminary certificate does show it on there. So I'm just making sure we're not gonna have any issues because our resolution that we're accepting doesn't have it.
Well, I hear the game when you have. I mean, that's what they gave us, so come the first year when you send them the carryover, they're gonna send you your first amendment certificate anyway, so it should all be on there once the carryovers are all getting there.
Okay.
So I don't know that it's a huge thing at this point, you know, because it's, it was done in September, so you don't even really know exactly what you're gonna have to repair and offset next year anyway, so.
Right.
So I mean, I mean, if you want me to call her and make something out of it, I guess I could, but if not, we could just wait until the amendment one comes out January first or second, or, please, maybe, if I'm lucky enough to get your vaporex come by, and I have to give her firm number, it'd be great.
Are we allowed to do the write it on and then, and then approve it, or do we have to approve the one they presented?
No, you can write it on, I mean, so it's your own, that's, that's.
I mean, we have all of those stuff. Uh, sure.
Well, that's true, I mean, honestly, I mean, you could do it any way you want, I mean, if you wanna just hold off till next month, I mean, they're not really gonna care, because it doesn't have to go back to the budget commission at this point anyway. The biggest thing was getting the budget done in time.
Right.
I, I honestly, we can accept that.
Well, yeah, I mean, we're, like I said, I think worst case scenario, they don't collect the, the bond levy, the taxpayers will pay less on the property taxes, and we still have, I don't know, an opponent, an opponent to, to get us through next year, so even if it does get, all right, I don't, as long as.
I don't think it's gonna affect the collection of the bond, if, if, if that's still supposed to be a place, I don't think that's gonna adhere to that at all, I think it's either a misprint or a date timeline thing.
Yeah, and I tend to agree, I just always say, well, that perhaps we're gonna prove it's gonna be known correct. Or incorrect, correct, but, all right, um. I will move to approve resolution eight twenty-five.
Second.
I'll second.
Roll, call, vote.
Rollie, yes?
O'Neil, yes?
For two, yes.
Before, um, well, actually, you had a couple times on fiscal, too, right, Ty, do you want to do?
Oh, yeah, I think someone did the same thing as I did, I think, no, I pulled out the warrants, too, uh, just if we wanna approve the warrants right now, why don't you have your attention, because you have questions. Uh, I don't, township and fire department.
I, I, well, let's, let's get into it then, since, since we wanna talk about warrants, um. And here, here's why I have an issue with the way that we did it last time. So, um, Ty, I believe, when you got back into town, you had sent an email saying that, there were payments that were late from last week's batch of checks that I approved and refused to sign, and Cherry had to wait for you to come back to the town to get them in the mail. This is ver- uh, that is very concerning. Um, I did ask for a copy of any invoice that was late as a result of my not signing, it didn't get a response, so.
Probably won't know until there's something to be put on.
Well, you're, you're.
There was a potential for some, yes, that, that was.
So, so that's, that's what you're gonna say, that, that some of them could, could be late because I didn't sign them?
Oh, yes.
Okay, so, there were, I went through every check. So, on the township side, we had eighteen total checks, um, that were down there to sell. Seventeen of them were listed on the payment listing, one of them wasn't even listed on the payment listing. So even if the payment listing was approved with warrants, there was one that had never been approved but got signed, so that's a separation. Of those, three were, uh, returns to residents, so two of them were, uh, rental, uh, town hall rentals, where we were doing a deposit, apparently, another one was the refund that we were doing on the, switch from the calibarium, the grave site calibarium, we gave fifty bucks back. So there were fifteen checks that were written to manage, that covered twenty-two invoices. Okay, so there were twenty-two invoices for the township. Eight of them were already late before we even met on the fifteenth. There was one invoice that was due on the nineteenth, but we met on the fifteenth, and Cherry texted us to come sign them on the nineteenth. So there was one invoice that possibly could have been late, because I hadn't signed them. All right, so that's on the township side. Then on the Fire District side, there were eighteen checks, again, there were only seventeen on the payment listing, so there was one that wanted to get it signed and sent out that was never approved before.
What was that one?
Uh, well, on the township side, we had a check, no, the, the check was for Blue, Blue Technologies, uh, and it was an invoice that was received on ninety-eight for fifty-six dollars and ninety-one cents. On the Fire District side, um, the check that was not on the payment listing was for Medina County Sanitary Engineers. Um, it was for four hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-seven cents, and it was received on September fifteenth, and it was already late from that bill, we, we, we were in arrears on that one already. Um, of the eighteen checks that were signed for the Fire Department, uh, twelve of them were already late prior to the meeting on fifteenth. There was the same rumpy bill that was sent to us on, uh, September fourth, was the date of the invoice due on September nineteenth, but again, the checks weren't even available to sign till September, September nineteenth, so that was gonna be late regardless of whether I signed it then or not. Additionally, you know, we talked about, and I talked about, you know, we need to ask the checks and balances. So the checks are prepared, Cherry gives us, and, and Ward did the same thing, we get an envelope, or a holder for both township side and the Fire District side. The checks are on there, and they're made out, there's a warrant, the lists, you know, the payment, and then there's the invoice that goes with it. So during that process, we should be reviewing everything and making sure it matches up, are we doing that?
I don't know, I think that the two, I'm wondering if I'm not, I actually.
There, there's, there's, oh, there, there's some additional outliers, um. So, uh, sensible products. The check was written for a hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. The invoice is for a hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents, so it's only thirty cents, and it's definitely a very simple thing, with the typo. But you both looked at it, didn't catch the error, signed the check, sent it out. Uh, the Ohio Fire Chiefs Association, there's a check here for two hundred and fifty dollars. The invoice is for a hundred dollars. There is another amount down here at the bottom for two fifty, if you wanna sign up for the interest and closing, but the check is made for two fifty, the invoice is a hundred. The more concerning is, at the bottom, Chief Tavonoff signed off on it, standard pay, it's already paid by credit card, so it was invoiced, it didn't even need to be paid, so we just sent two hundred and fifty dollars out, we didn't know anything.
Oh, yeah, that, that's what's confusing part, when everybody pays by credit card.
Ever on, actually. This was for ninety-five dollars eighty-four cents, Cherry, I'm guessing that's your hand, my hand right on there, right?
Yeah, yeah.
What does it say? Late J P, so it's my fault that's late. What's the due date on the invoice?
No, that's not, that's not my fault, all those bills are late, and they're not.
Well, I, I understand, but, but, but on here, and then the story that's being presented is that, because I didn't sign the checks, invoices are late, but this one was due before we even met.
I understand that, but I wrote a lot of checks that sat there for two weeks, that's the time I, I didn't know. I did, I'm still trying to catch up with all the bills that are coming from January, February, March, April, May, and June, that, and that's why there are a lot of them on.
We already checked two first communications for three hundred and seventy-eight dollars and sixty-six cents, it was stapled to the invoice for AT&amp;T Mobility. Uh, AT&amp;T Mobility, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and sixty cents, stapled to the check, the invoice for first communication. So I'm not sure if there's any way to verify if these are the right amounts or the right invoices, but that's an issue. Stryker, we paid two thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-six cents, there are multiple invoices attached to this, there is no way to sum any of these totals to two thousand four forty-three ninety-six.
I'm just gonna buy what Brian gives me on this striker thing.
There, there, well, well, what I'm saying, all the invoices are attached here, and no matter how you add any of these numbers together, I can't go with any combination of numbers that comes up to two thousand four forty-three ninety-six. And, and the thing is, it's not about mistakes getting made, but two people looked at all of these and just signed the check and moved on, and, and there's clearly a number of errors that were made. And the fact that invoices are late has nothing to do about whether I sign checks or anything along those lines, it has to do with the fact that we need months a month, and there's no process or procedure in place to make sure that we aren't doing this. We've got, on the payment listing, and again, not Cherry's fault, we've got an invoice from April that's never been paid, that's on the payment listing for tonight. So again, this whole narrative that somehow, because I won't sign checks that we never approved at a meeting, and I would never, I, I don't understand the concept of approving a payment, that we haven't reviewed an invoice, but that's just absolutely acidizing, we've been taking both to, to protect the taxpayer money, and, and we're just gonna approve. Yeah, anyway, we don't keep going.
We, we wanna look at every check before you approve the warrants.
Absolutely, I think that's the bare minimum.
Well, I want, yep, bringing up, yes, absolutely.
So why didn't we do that at the last meeting, when I asked you the question? We, we totally skipped that whole thing, we went from that right into audience participation and never even entertained.
And it was. There were no, there were no warrants prepared, there was a.
It's just, oh shit, they were sitting right there, they were here, just the same place they're at right now. Were they not, or some? All the checks were here last month, I don't wanna hear they weren't here, they were sitting right up there where they always are.
Dude, why didn't you say something that they were sitting there?
I don't understand, because I'm just, I don't like, I don't know why you didn't do it, because I understood that when you approved the consent agenda, you approved the bills. And I find out that the checks didn't exist.
I understand the disconnect, but we've never, that's never been a procedure, ever. Um, all right, so we got that out of the way, um, with the warrants. I had a couple other questions on fiscal, though, um.
Go to one.
Well, do you wanna do the bank, the Westfield Bank one?
I only went to warrants because you kinda brought up.
Yeah, no, that's fun, um.
Did you put Westfield down also?
I, 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 I did, because you put down, I put it down, well, I mean, it was close, but, Westfield Bank, um, I don't know, had a group, uh, um, our rate expired, uh, on eight-four, and the new rate that they give us, and I'll tell you, uh, expires twelve twenty-two. So we were at four and quarter percent, it expired, and then, um, they didn't catch it in time, so they're gonna re, uh, refund us the money for that period of time, and they did it, they did it for, uh, at four percent interest. Um, so I had called, uh, the bank and said, hey, there's something wrong, I just don't know what's going on, so, uh, we emailed the, what I'm telling you to all the trustees, and said, table it out.
Wait, wait, real, real quick, real quick, I asked Cherry for the statements, she wasn't able to get access to the statements, because they, she's had difficulty with getting Westfield to access them, so I went to Westfield, and I got the bank's statements, and then I sent you guys all an email, saying that we, our interest rate was point six percent, so.
But, but, well, yeah, either way, so I called Jared, I called Jared about that, the bank, and said, hey, there's something messed up, you guys need to look at that, so.
There, there was, and we, we, we were, we discussed this at a previous meeting, actually, uh, Ms. Howland's asked you about it, if we were gonna keep an eye on that account, because we, we were told that that rate was gonna expire through the end of August, so I, I'm equally as lively, although we, we knew that was gonna happen in the drop.
Right, and if we keep the same checking account, which is called Signature Money Market, it will, uh, the four percent will expire on December twenty-second. So their suggestion was to get a new product called, uh, Premier Advantage, and it has no expiration date, um, only if the, uh, feds change their actions or competition, and that rate would be locked in at three point nine five percent, so. Um, as the board, we can decide, just a simple, we'll, we'll allow to change, uh, the check, so if you guys wanna discuss that.
My, my position's still the same, I, I think it makes the fiscal officers absolutely harder to add two banks for, for, for no apparent advantage from a savings rate, um, we can utilize Huntington, we got a better rate on the checking account there, and then rest of money, Star Ohio gets a higher rate than Westfield, so.
Huntington, one point, it's less than two percent.
Cherry.
And that's the Cherry, you just sent all the Huntington's, it's less than one, or less than two percent.
Uh, you're right, this, this month, it, the one nine five seven, but again, we should be utilizing Star Ohio, which is at four point three seven, for, for everything we don't need for bail to quit.
I'm guessing that Star Ohio would affect them in the debt. Um, you know, Star Ohio is an investment thing, where that fluctuates based off of, you know, stocks and bonds and what are the cases.
No, it doesn't.
It doesn't?
Some bonds, some bonds, but there's no stocks, it's, it's.
Or whatever they're investing, but it's still, at the end of the day, it's an investment, where you're not sure what day-to-day your percentage rate's gonna be, where if you got a firm number of any bank, whatever case is, I don't care if you use Chase for all I care, but to me, if you got a fixed number of four percent, and Star Ohio may be, may apply here, but it may hit down to three, you don't know, I mean, it's, at the end of the day, it's an investment, it's not.
Sure, and, and, and just like Huntington, we adjust our, our checking account, now, or our checking account interest rate, they're watching, we do the same thing, and this is, what, the third time now, we've had to have them credit us for back interest, because the rate dropped, and we had to, we had to contact them, because we're getting no proactive service whatsoever on Huntington. I, I mean, and I'm not gonna belabor it tonight, we, we know what the thoughts and the processes are on that, so if you guys wanna make a change.
I think Westfield will afford it.
Obviously, it puts some issues in the question, but they've always, they've always stepped up, and they are providing better interest rate, I'm not questioning that question. Uh, that's what's on here, I think the year then, uh, Star Ohio, and we have, not even Star Ohio, but, you know, I was saying, though, that it's not a deposit, it's not here, too. And there is a real small, there's a small four, the first location, I put an all right in that math, it's, it's, in the beginning, I think. Everybody needs your own opinion, I think we should try to push for the meeting, if the house is a mess, or if we try to, because I am drafted, but I don't know, looking stories on the previous, uh, fiscal officer, and, and, of course, funds at Westfield, and, and it shouldn't be this hard, you know, it should tip down, but it's a better problem.
Um, one, one.
Yeah, I mean, they, they can set up, but, I mean.
One of us individually, and the fiscal officer.
Um, you wanna.
I don't have a problem with the constitution, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not.
I don't know, um.
How much fun is a bankroll during a bank share, especially when it's not open on Saturdays?
Well, right now, I haven't done anything, because I'm not getting any firm answers on what was supposed to happen before, I know nothing went the right way with opening up anything, so we, when I started here, and I'm paying all these bills out of Huntington, so I mean, I wonder, is one of you guys asked me why the checks aren't written out of Westfield, like, because there's not a check from Westfield we found in this building, so no, no checks were ever ordered. So, you, I mean, you guys just threw me into this hot mess of everything. So, you know, I mean, you guys just threw me into this hot mess of everything, and I'm supposed to figure it out with no guidance, and then.
That wasn't actually, uh, Chris.
No, it's a really good question to ask.
No, I'm just saying, it's just, I just have no checks, so I mean, does it sting? It's not great. The only problem I see right now, it would move again, and that's the only thing I did actually get to ask you guys. Right now, your credit card with, um, the Huntington, Huntington's demanding, well, they're demanding, anyway, that the credit card come out A C H because it's always been late. Well, the problem is, the fire department, the roads, everybody uses the same credit card. And since they're demanding A C H, now they take, like, Brian uses it from the fire department, they take it out of our account. So there's just one more thing I gotta do. I have to go in there, now I gotta transfer money from the fire department to, I'm not sure why they're even on the same credit card.
You still get two though, right?
There's another account that says zero, and I'm gonna call, um, what's that lady's name? Melissa, I think. And just see if, like, we can switch the fire department to their own card, so then they're, they're gonna insist on the A C H, at least comes out of their account, and not out of our account, because then you gotta go in and flip money around, and that's just the same itself anyway, but. Yeah, so I mean, do I enjoy it? No, I don't care. I mean, it's up to you guys, how you wanna do it. It's no different driving to Lodi than it is driving to Westfield, distance-wise. And they gave us that check reader thing, the deposit thing, I just, I've never used one, but sure it's not rocket science. And honestly, the township doesn't get even remotely as many checks deposited as like the fire department does, because they, they get ten to twenty a day.
Motion to, uh, change the checking account to Premier Advantage.
I'm motioning to change the checking account to Premier Advantage.
Second. I'll second. I'll put it in favor, aye.
Aye.
I'm posting, sign.
Aye.
So when do you want me to start taking your money and moving it into Westfield? Like, start, do you want me to start ordering checks? Because that takes a while, we know that after the last debacle.
Absolutely.
Well, actually, you know, and actually, that's a decent segue into one of those things I wanted to cover under fiscal. Um, I've always been under the impression, uh, based on the investment strategy policy that we put in place, that at the end of the day, when it comes to moving money between the accounts that we have, whether it's Huntington, Star, whatever, that that was authority that we had given to the fiscal officer, to be able to transfer funds that she needs, not obviously from a budgetary standpoint, on the appropriations, but within, within banking accounts, right? Like, we have bills to pay, she needs money in the checking account. She can go in and, and have money moved out of savings into checking from Star to the bank. Does, does that sound accurate? Okay, well, the only reason I bring it up is because there have been some, I guess, questions or some accusations made of an inappropriate transfer of seventy thousand dollars from Star Ohio savings to our Huntington checking account, um, that happened shortly after Sherry started. Um, you know, when Laura departed, there was not enough money in the Huntington accounts to make payroll. And Sherry hadn't been set up on any of the bank accounts yet, so she didn't have the authority to do any of that. So in working with Sherry, I made a call to Star Ohio and authorized a transfer of seventy thousand dollars from our Star Ohio account to go into Huntington, so that we can meet payroll. So I, I just wanted to kinda clarify on there, one, what happened there, two, why that falls well, at least why I thought it fell well within the authority that we had already given to the fiscal officer, I just wanted to see.
When, like, when was that done?
Uh, like, the second day.
Two days after I started. The second day, when I was, the second day after I started.
Right.
It was late July, and I saw.
No, it was early July.
Yeah, no, it was probably mid-July. I mean, it was literally.
Well, you guys heard about the sun and.
Right, right.
I saw them, and I asked her about it, and she told me, you know, I didn't make a big deal, I really would've been nice to have gotten a note from one of the trustees and handled this.
Okay, so, so I just wanna verify, every time she moves money behind accounts, she should be telling us?
No, the trustee did, not the fiscal officer. Which is the only reason that I did it, is because.
Oh, yes.
That was courtesy.
Right. Okay, I wouldn't say that the, I wouldn't say that you did it wrong. The only thing I would prefer as another trustee is if you just let us know, hey, Sherry's not set up yet, I have to do this to help pay, thank you.
And the reason I didn't bring it up at all is because it went to a good cause, was for the express purpose of making payroll. Well, it was also within her authority to do it herself, the only reason she couldn't is because she needed it added to the accounts.
Yeah.
Okay, um, since we've been talking about the, the checks and balances kind of thing, that the, the fact that we should be working together to facilitate the efficient use of, you know, the efficient, uh, functions of, of our government here, um. I think we need to discuss, you know, Sherry, Sherry's done a phenomenal job with, um, the payroll visibility compared to where it was before. I think for the first time ever, I'm actually getting, you know, prior to, prior to Sherry taking over, it was always just, uh, sign timesheets, and then payroll went out without any type of review process or anything along those lines. I, I do think we've discussed this before, I think that that probably is a little bit of a dereliction on our part of, of that review process. Part of it's because of our meeting schedules, obviously, we have to disperse funds for payroll, but I do think that, based on some things that have happened recently, if there was a review process where, you know, payroll was finalized, and then board reviewed and authorized it, it would be a chance to catch errors that, you know, are, are just, I mean, things happen, like, we all, we all make mistakes, but I, I think if we had that review process, we probably wouldn't have had the issue that we did with the fire department payroll at the beginning of September.
There was, you asking me?
Well, I, it's probably easier to explain, I don't wanna.
Well, when Brian, Brian just sent a spreadsheet, and then when I picked it up out of the, um, off the website, I printed out the wrong ones, it was solely my fault, and I. The only problem with you guys reviewing with not paying by check and paying by direct deposit is I don't even get the timesheets until Monday. And then I have to get in here on Tuesday, and I have to process fifty paychecks, and I picked up the wrong, so it was solely my fault, but we have since rectified it, Brian and I, we went through it all.
Yes.
But, um, so I can't wait much past Tuesday to deposit or to do all the payroll and get it to Huntington Bank, so that it hits the bank for direct deposit, because they have to have it at the minimum two days in advance. So I tried to do it on Tuesday, just in case there's a problem, I have to shoot back in there on Wednesday, uh, fix it. That unfortunately did come out until I didn't find that till the day of payroll. But, so I mean, unless you're gonna come in here and sit down and pay, well, maybe on Tuesday before it goes out, I don't know what to tell you.
Is that, is that what it would require? I mean, and that's why I'm, I'm bringing it up, is again, not, not to do anything other than to figure out how we can streamline the process, or.
Right, that's the only thing I'd tell you.
Or use a process to make sure that there's a, another check in there, so that. Look, we're all human, that, that, that's not what this is about, but it's, you know, there's a way, there's gotta be a way that we can help, you know, catch some, some of these things, especially while Sherry's digging out from everything that she's under, right, like.
Right, right.
We all know what it's like to be stressed, you know, you're, you're just more prone to missing something, I mean, it just.
Is that the only payroll group?
Yeah, we've had.
Yeah.
Yeah, and.
And how, how was it, what was the rectification that happened there, correct?
Well, basically, what it was, is they, um, some of the, there was like six of the firemen that got overpaid, so we just took it out of the next pay, so. I mean, it's already been, it's a done deal now, I mean, we just, when Brian sent me the payroll for the last time, we just, I have a spreadsheet in my computer, and he's been knocking them off as they've been working, so.
And if, I'm assuming that the, these are probably all direct deposits.
Everybody's direct deposit.
And so if there is a mistake.
There, there's no way to rectify it at that point, because it's already hit the bank.
Right, but we could go back and probably correct it almost every direct, not that we'd wanna do that, it's much easier to wait for the next pay cycle and just.
No, but correct it.
And, and please, correct me if I'm wrong, because it's, it's not like I process a lot of payrolls, but like, isn't there a, a, a step where like, when we loaded in, like, the payroll journal could be reviewed by somebody, that we can have a process of just like a second set of eyes and double check to just be like, hey, everything matched? Cause that's, like, look, that's all I do when Brian sends payroll for the fire department, really, I, I have no way of verifying that, you know, everybody clocked the hours that he, that he says they clock, but it's more just a double check of, hey, did you, you're all, you've got all your pay rates lined up right, you've got all your hours, so. There isn't something that's clearly off, right, something that worked a hundred and eighty-five hours or some, you know what I mean, like, something crazy? Cause it happens, right? Like, that's why we have checks in place, so I didn't know if there was a way, you know, to, to, it's like, there's something to think about.
I mean, I'm trying to figure out something, man, I could, I mean, I haven't even been getting the timesheet until Tuesday, so. Half the time, I gotta ask them for them, I'm like, yeah, I didn't get this done, at least make sure it's in my door when I get down there, so I can work on it. Now, Brian's pretty good about it, and Rick was on vacation a couple times, but, you know, if I had it on Monday, I'd come down on Monday and do it, you know?
So getting the timesheets earlier would help too, was what you're saying.
Sure, I mean, if they're done on Saturday's last day, give it to me on, I mean, Rick could give it to me on Friday if they're not working the weekend. And then, you know, right before he leaves, just open my door. And then if I wanna come down Saturday or Sunday and process, you know, because when you, when you do the payroll, when you E F T it to the bank, you tell them the bank, the, the, the day that you want it to hit. So you can do it well in advance, it doesn't matter, you know, I mean, and Brian's, his spreadsheets are ridiculous, I'm like, I don't even care how much these people, what they do, just give me how much they make and how many hours it is. His spreadsheet's nine feet long, so he's been reducing it down to just that for me, because that was ridiculous, but, so he's been doing that.
Does Brian do, uh? Does he do it Monday mornings and?
Well, the payroll stops on Saturday, I don't expect him to come in on Sunday.
Right, usually he gets them down fairly well.
Yeah, he's a.
Every once in a while, a little bit later, but.
Um.
I mean, and, and for most part, if I could get them done on Monday, I mean, it doesn't matter Monday or Tuesday, unless I have a meeting somewhere else, but I normally don't on Mondays and Tuesdays, so. I would prefer to just get down here and get out of my hair, yeah, so. So if they wanna get it done by Monday, and then I can send you guys that, you know, when you E F T it, it'll switch on the E F T report, and I can email to you, and you guys can look at it, and as long as you let me know by Tuesday, if not, I'm shipping it through.
Okay, so. Uh, I had another question on, um, I noticed, you know, and I don't know if it's, you know, previously, we had always received an official pay at the end of the month. Um, I think Laura always did it as a separate one-off. I don't know that that's the easiest or the best way to do it, but I noticed, you know, obviously, all of our employees are on bi-weekly, um, the elected officials are first to the end of the month. So I wasn't sure why our September one through September thirty, the pay was processed on the nineteenth. Probably because that's when you process the second payroll on the month, right?
I didn't even really catch that. What did you say?
The, the elected officials, our pay period.
Cause that's the last pay period of the month, I, I mean, that's why I asked that question, and I was told the last pay of the month, whatever, falls with the other ones.
I mean, okay.
And that question was asked, and that's the answer I got, so.
Okay, I, and, and that's why I'm saying, I, I mean, I, I don't know if you asked, and that's fine, but like, you know, I just don't, I don't know anywhere where you get paid before the end of the pay period.
Well, at the end of the day, though, you're, by doing it, I mean, it doesn't really matter, I mean, by statute, you're getting paid anyway, unless you walked out the door, but if you worked one day a month, you're gonna get paid anyway. So now, if I had to do three payrolls.
I, I, I'm not suggesting at all, I'm just saying.
But then you, what I'm not even saying is that, I'm saying, then you have, then you have three nine forty-ones, you have three, you know, it's.
And, and, and I, and I don't think you're a hundred percent correct, like, if I put on the first of the month, I don't get paid for the full month.
Well, you probably don't, you actually guys referred it back there.
Right, and, and, and on top of it, you'd have a statutory issue because you, if you replaced me, you couldn't pay that person for the remainder of the month, because I've already been paid for it. So I, I just think, like, I agree, there, there's no reason to do an extra payroll, I just don't think we should be paying ourselves before we've completed the pay period for which we're being paid. So it should probably be on the first payroll of the following month.
Is that how you guys want it? I mean, you know what I'm saying, you guys gave me no guidance, I've just been running blind.
You're all talking, no.
No, I, I, and that's why I said, I understand it's always been at the very end of the month, not a separate payroll, but, you know, I, I just think none of our employees get paid before they earn the check.
I'd say you.
It's the easiest for you.
I don't know, the end of the month, it doesn't work. Well, you know, I mean, I'm.
The first payroll, so like, so for October, it would be the first payroll in November, to be elected officials get paid. And, and it, I'm just saying, like, I think, I think it's, it's cleaner, you know, I, I spoke with, you know, my clients, or actually, it was Nathan Todd, I spoke with prosecutor members about it. And there was a case where there was a trustee, another township, that opted to pay their, their trustees lump sum the whole year, January one, guy quit.
Never got recovered.
Well, they didn't get it recovered, and they couldn't, they, they statuteually could not pay the replacement trustee because they had already paid for it, like, the statute limits how you can pay for the office, so they had to go out and try to recruit somebody to do this job for absolutely nothing.
Oh, sounds like me. I work, and I don't get paid by.
Sherry, stay with two, stay with two, put elected John first.
Yeah, that, that's.
Well, that's fine, I, I didn't know.
And then the last thing I have under fiscal is, um, where, how do we wanna handle, uh, cleaning up the audit for sick time?
Oh, I'm trying to work on that, so I did back it off of them when I did Rick's check, so you, I see what you have to do now, that I'll go back and put them back where they were, and I put them all back to the four hour, so I just had to drop Rick's, because I, I dropped him back to where he was, but then picked up again, so I'll audit it and go through it again.
And are we doing that, is it the, are we doing four hours at every paycheck?
Yeah, because you get eight hours a month, so I have to pay attention when there's a third pay.
Yeah.
Right, you know?
Yeah, alright, cool, that's all I had on this, thank you.
Basically, his is the only one at this point too, that we have to worry about, because he's the one I have to, they've started going in and adjusting every pay, so unless he uses any, to stay at that number. It's just a mental note I have to make to make sure, you know?
You're talking about just accruing, right?
Pardon me?
You're talking about just accruing sick time, right?
No, because, um, since you guys, obviously, nobody knew that we were, I know nobody knew this until Mike Lyons told us that we are not a civil service township, didn't know there was a difference between a regular township and a civil service township, so now we all know. So you guys don't have to file the O R C on sick time for state employees, like villages and cities, and you don't meet the ten thousand mark of people, and there's a couple of things that you have to.
So the cap is nine hundred and sixty hours on the condition, and the way our policy is written, because, I mean, the other thing that Sherry and I talked about right off the rip was the fact that, like, the state, if you do have to file that, it's four point six hours for every eighty-four. Our, our policy is written that it's one day a month, so it's, like Sherry said, we need to do four hours every other, like, every payday then, in the months where there's a third, you just zero it out, or you have to do like three point seven.
Yeah, I'll just, it only happens twice a year, so it's not hard to remember.
But that's all, and so we'll need to go back and double check to make sure that it doesn't.
Uh, service.
Um, did you guys get a chance to review the reports? Any questions on that, um?
Well, yes, uh, cause you saying that, uh, the ten-ton trailer that Hall's asked for, and it's tired, he got two quotes, North Gateway and Holmes Tunder.
Yep. He said, I mean, it's thirty bucks more on North Gateway, which is right here in town, so.
But I, I didn't say they're a three-boat town.
Yeah, and great to work with, and if you have any issues, prepare a replacement warranty.
Is that what you wanted to do with North Gateway?
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's that, and, and then, you know, also, I need to say to, uh, uh, do a thank you to the county for lending us the equipment that he was able to use for, uh, Egypt and, uh, dairy, uh, Egypt and Carson, they're doing some asphalt work out there. Was able to get a little bit done on Deerview as well, so thank you, um, but.
No, I, I would just, real quick, since we're on, I would like to, to thank Rick as well, um, we had an incident where, um, a sick deer had been put down in our development, and, uh, he came out on a Sunday evening to, to remove it from the tree lawn, so, didn't have to do that, but that was nice of him.
Top of the.
I hate it. Get that done, so, so definitely wanted to recognize him for that, so.
Are those tires coming out of Roden Bridge?
What's that?
I don't, okay, how much was it, just like?
Uh, well, I would make a motion to approve fourteen fifty, uh, for four new tires, well, it is for, um, well, for new tires, for the trailer, for North Gateway.
I'll second all those in favor, right?
I, I.
I, yeah. North Gateway, fourteen hundred and fifty dollars. Anything on some?
Yes, uh, resolution, this is an agreement we passed at my motion last year. The, the rates are not gonna change unless you guys have an issue with, and we'll, we'll discuss, discuss.
I, I haven't even seen it, I mean, I'm assuming it's pretty much the same language as last time, but I'm not changing review.
And you, and you.
I do need to, uh, well, I think we could do this, uh, a, agree to contract with Chickwater Lake Village for, uh, October first to September three next year, at ninety-five dollars an hour. It's, it's the exact same situation as it was last year.
I, I know, but I, this is the, literally.
I didn't realize you guys were confident.
Yeah, no, you didn't send out the contract, right?
No, this, this is a time.
Right, when was the last time we visited rates last year? We, we increased it last year?
Uh, it was last year.
Might have been the year before, but it might, I mean, it's still very fair.
And Rick wants to keep it at ninety-five.
And it's mo- mostly plowing, it, very little.
Yeah.
Or come.
Well, if, if both of you guys are ready and wanna put it through, that's fine, but I haven't. If both of you guys are ready and wanna put it through, that's fine, but I have the redits on that, obviously the same for voting on it, I'm not gonna hold the whole. Full of redacts compared to last year's contract and. It just would've been nice to have it sent out.
Yeah, and I apologize if I didn't.
But, um, I mean, if you want to, you can see the dates on that. Hopefully if you wanna kick it off, I'm not so referred. That's already played for that, but. I don't think it's gonna be sold on plowing anytime.
Oh, you gotta jinx it.
Alright, alright.
Would you rather go through it? Uh, it's up to you, we motioned it last year, I mean, we, we are contracting between two government parties, it probably shouldn't be a resolution. So I don't think it's gonna hurt to wait, just change the dates on it.
Okay.
Just as long as you let the village know.
Yep. And that's it for, uh, first.
Fighter.
Chief decided to go on vacation, so he's not here. Um, right, yeah, so, well, you guys all saw chief's report, right, sixty three calls for September. Uh, forty five in the township, uh, seven in Chippewa Lake, two in Dory Blends, uh, one in Chatham, one in the city of Medina, one in Guilford Township, one in Medina Township. Two in Wandsworth and two in York, um, is right up. Uh, September sixth, our members provided an ambulance for the football game, uh, the department participated in the tunnel of the towers, uh, Medina Run, Walk in Medina in September eighth. This organization assists fallen first responders and military families with mortgage free homes, smart homes, wounded and disabled veterans and firefighter, police officers. Uh, September thirteenth, the Lafayette Township Firefighters Association held its ninth race event, the Lafayette Fire Department is thankful to this organization and the equipment we were able to fund due to these events. And the department participated in the ribbon cutting ceremony for the new Medina County Sheriff's Office shooting range on December twenty fourth. Um, we did apply and receive notification of grant award from Blue Coat Subs Medina County for five thousand dollars for a different, for a radiator, radiator? I didn't chief. But anyway, uh, battery chargers and training props, uh, we are having issues with the Ford Explorer, uh, acceleration and deceleration issues, back in the shop again. Um, you guys should have received a copy of two quotes for the air conditioning compressor. Yep, so there was, uh, R and J Heating and Cooling, uh, six thousand thirty five fifteen and then also a, uh. Samson for fifty one hundred, uh, chief didn't really, uh, indicate any real preference other than the fact that it needs to be done. Um, unfortunately, we aren't able to get any type of warranty, um, replacement on any of those, but, uh. You know, I don't know what your guys' thoughts are, but I probably lean towards having Samson better, better price in right in our backyard, so.
Yeah.
I would feel the same way. And I would make a motion to approve fifty one hundred dollars for Samson for HVAC, uh, compressor for the fire department.
I'll second. All of your favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Fifty one hundred, the Samson.
Uh, Johnson Controls will be providing a quote for repairing the fire alarm system, they've determined that it has received some sort of power surge, uh, and it will be covered by, uh, our insurance. Um, and they took busy, uh, the team took busy preparing for ISO certification, which will determine our future public protection classification, which affects. Uh, everybody's own insurance rates. Um, the only other item that chief had was, um, a salary continuation for injured firefighter. Um, I don't know, I sent you guys a copy, well, chief sent the email out, and then, uh, I don't know if you guys wanted to have a quick executive session to discuss it, or?
I think it probably makes sense on you.
It could go either way, but it probably, probably should be.
Should be short.
Yeah, I think so.
I'll go with that. Alright, roll call for the executive session.
Uh, one twenty one G, what is it?
One twenty one twenty two.
G one.
G one.
Alright. For compensation, um, I'll make the motion, well, uh, rule yes. Would, yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Roll call.
Rule yes.
Rule yes. Fourteen S, break mountains, executive session at seven forty five P M. Should not be long.
Just three hours, right? Yeah, it's just.
All right, we're back out of the executive session, the time is seven fifty-four P M. No decisions were made. Uh, we're still on fire. There aren't any, uh, there's anything else I'm good. Police?
We had three hundred and twenty-eight total incidents last month. Some of the highlights, uh, forty part of purposes, thirty-two traffic stops. Eleven non-injury crash, one injury crash, one hundred and fourteen vacation watches, two disturbances, four welfare checks, and two deceased people, one was a natural cause, one was a blocking accident. The incident on Hunter, uh, during the cleanup back in May, uh, where the resident Brandon Porter was arrested. Uh, he did take that case to trial, uh, he was found guilty and last week was sentenced to thirty days in jail. So that puts that case to a close. That's all I have unless you have any questions.
I do not, I do not.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Zoning, uh, there were ten, uh, zoning permits written, uh, please collected was two thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars for a total value estimate of one billion five hundred and six thousand. Uh, Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, has one variance received this month. Uh, regular meeting, public hearing will be October twenty-first at six thirty. Um, it's for a shared driveway, uh, they wish to have another home built, uh, on the back of the existing property. Zoning Commission update, regular meeting, public hearing will be held October fourteenth at six thirty. Um, a property on Lafayette Road, um, is zoned, uh, light manufacturing and they were wanting to change it to rural, um, residential. And then also, uh, the map amendment went up to the C P C, uh, October first. And this is the same as the Lafayette Road, uh, the C P C came back with their recommendation on the, uh, map amendment. The planning commission voted to disapprove the proposed zoning map amendment from light manufacturing to rural residential. As part of the motion, the commission encouraged the township to work with the Parcelone to reach a compromise such as a lot split that would avoid rezoning the entire seventy-eight plus acres. Uh, Medina County Building, uh, the zoning inspectors working with Medina County Building Department on, uh, two different properties. Uh, they're working with the Health Department on two different properties. Uh, Medina County Engineers, uh, put, uh, sent out two stop work orders on two properties, uh, in Lafayette. Uh, basically for grading, uh, without the permit. And that's all I have for zoning.
Um, one thing kind of falls under zoning, um, just to get clarification, I went to, uh, finalize the charges for the Hunter Drive cleanup on the tax duplicate and they asked if we wanted to do it all next year or if we wanted to stretch. Yeah, we've reached out over up to five years. Well, actually they said it could be as long as they wanted it along to every single five. So I didn't, uh, want to make that determination without talking to you guys on what your thoughts are.
What, when do they need to know by?
Well, when we, when we file, um, I mean theoretically, as long as we get it in probably before the end of the year. Alright, so next year, um, it'll get on the tax duplicate. If sooner we get it filed, probably better. Um, I would say as long as it's done by the end of the year, we're good. Um, and realistically, even if we have it fully assessed next year, it doesn't necessarily mean that it gets paid at full next year or that we can even, you know, that the actual closure is going to happen super fast if it were to go that avenue. So, you know, I, I don't know what your guys' thoughts are. I mean, we, we've already outlaid the money, uh, the taxpayers paid for it. You know, I, I tend to feel that, you know, just put it on and. Yeah, it, it was a lot smaller than I don't know how much that. We, we, we gave the property owner ample opportunity to come to us to, to rectify the situation, to come to a resolution. And I don't think it went the way anybody wanted it to go, um, but, you know. If you guys want, I can finalize the paperwork and just tell them to, to assess it all next year and.
I'm, I'm fine with that.
I'm sure, I'm sure if it comes down to it, they'll work, I mean, they'll work. You know what I mean, like it's, we're not going to be the absolute authority to, to say it's all or nothing anyway, so.
But we might as well try to right quickly as we can.
I didn't want, but it looks like we are on top of it and addressing it was from, uh, Mrs. Vida Viz at, uh, seventy-seven Egypt Road about the property at seventy fifty-six. But Sherry's got it on her report, it sounds like she's working on it. Um, potentially some issues with, uh, the structure being unsafe and possibly some junk vehicles, so. Sounds like she's working on it, I just did want to address the fact that, uh, Karen had reached out to me just to find out kind of where it was going and make sure that it was being addressed.
Um, unresolved, uh, Township Newsletter, I know, uh, it was brought up at the last meeting and disagreement or whatever, um, uh, would definitely like to bring up for a discussion again. Uh, we budgeted for this, um, and, uh, we have the funds put aside for it and, uh, it's ready to go out, so I would make the motion to approve, uh, the quote that we got from Minuteman, uh, the total out the doors, uh, four thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty-six cents.
Uh, but that's not including, I mean, we take the ads off there, correct? We've, we've got.
Oh, yeah, whatever, minus the ads.
We still. We still need to.
Correct, but maybe we did get, what will be a twenty-six forty-nine forty-six.
Well, I'll just make two brief, I'll just make two brief comments, the same ones that I made the last time, you know? Um, as candidates, you, you know, you would, and I think rightfully question the use of the taxpayer money to, you know, push people's images and name recognition in advance of an election with use of taxpayer dollars. Um, but since sitting up here, we, we, we're now approaching what will now be close to thirty-five thousand dollars that will be spent on, spent on these newsletters, so, you know. I don't know what changed from criticizing the practice as candidates for office and trustees, but that's up to you guys. The one thing I do have issue with is because of some questions about advertising for politics in the ads, we, we received a legal opinion from the prosecutor's office. Uh, in there, one of the prohibited items that we are not allowed to advertise for is. Promotes alcoholic beverages, cigarettes, or other tobacco products of any, or any illegal product, service, or activity. So I would interpret that very clearly as we, we cannot allow, as much as we may want to, any of the local bars from advertising in a newsletter that's paid for with tax dollars. So unless we're gonna remove, I think, the proposed newsletter headwind from roadside, roadside. I know we've come to the village in the past, but obviously can't do anything about past transgressions, but, um, at a minimum, we should be pulling that in and refunding roadside. I don't agree with that whole thing.
I would say that if you're advertising, I don't know, an Anheuser-Busch ad or a Marlboro ad or something like that. We're advertising a little business, my opinion.
I, I agree, I mean, that's, that's a restaurant, you can go there. Pop here, they serve beer, whatever. Promoting businesses. Motion?
I will make the motion to approve the, uh, newsletter head printed, uh, by Minuteman Press for forty-three ninety-nine forty-six.
Second? I'll second, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposing, son?
Aye.
All right, new server. I know the chief has been talking a ton with, uh, K P C over this older server that we have in the back room, but it operates the whole fire department and the township, um. Justin, not your liaison, we had a conversation with Brian about the server lagging and backing up.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen some emails from him.
They've been, I think it was registered.
Well, I mean, the, the, I think the server issue, that was from the communications from Keith to K G C probably predates us even switching liaison position. So I mean, it's definitely something that we've probably kicked, uh, too far down the road at this point, um. And Chief has definitely expressed, um, his personal dissatisfaction with, uh, with Lightspeed, um, in favor of Keith. Um, you know, we did, I did share the court, the Lightspeed, I think I supported it both of you as well. Um, you know, Lightspeed did offer slightly better hardware, uh, with a better warranty and a little bit better price, but I'm not really sure, like I said, if, if we were going to try to be correct in the topic, we probably should have done that already. It sounds like we're kind of at a point where we back ourselves into a corner on replacing that server.
Well, I can vary these two quotes too, I don't believe this one includes the Microsoft licensing. I hate to bring it up, but.
Why, I don't think Keith covers the licensing either, though.
Like you said it today.
Yeah, yeah, I did, I mean, he said that, he covered like the licensing with COVID-30.
Like I said, I mean, it's not listed on the quote, I'm not arguing it is or isn't, but it's not listed on the quote, so. I think the only place that I disagree with Chief is like why don't you pay for it? And I think it unfortunately, as much as, as much as I, 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 I'd like to agree, um, I, I don't think without the, I don't think without the, the need from the fire department, I think we'd be worried about a server for, if it was just the township operations. I know the township uses some of the blood, but the fire department's need is significantly heavier, so. If you think we have to find what we appropriated it out of, or pay for it, it's not appropriate within the township, but I tried to fire it.
Oh, you're not.
I doubt you guys are going to split.
We wouldn't be doing it if it wasn't for the fire district. And, and they are two separate sets of constituencies. I mean, I, I know that the township is part of both, but, you know, neither of the villages, you know, fund the town, like the township proper, so. I think it should come fully out of the fire district budget. But it doesn't need to be done.
We can agree on that.
Yes.
I think there should be some sort of, I don't know.
I don't think fifty-fifty would be fair because most of it's here, I get it, I understand what Justin's saying, I'm familiar with that, but. The township does use it too, not, I mean, obviously not one near as much, but. Percentage, seventy-five twenty-five or, or just give it all to fire? What, what are you thinking?
I mean, we would use it too.
Yeah, it's connected by. Yeah, yeah, and, and seventy-five twenty-five probably fair compromise.
I, I would be okay with that.
Okay. Then I would make the motion to approve, uh, server replacement from K G C Tech Group, uh, quote sixty-two, six eighty-nine, amount seventeen thousand two fifty ninety-five. To be allocated seventy-five percent from the fire district and twelve percent from the township general fund.
I'll second.
Hang on a minute.
Yep.
Um, I'm, you have the appropriations you said, I'm sure you're not, I'm not even sure whether you're pulling that from either side, so.
Alright.
Before we get in another match about having to reallocate, that's coming down to play.
So.
So how much is it free from?
Well, let's get you the tables. So it'd be four thousand three twelve seventy-four from the township. And we should be perfectly fine onto the general fund for that.
Well, yeah, we still have to have it in the right line, I think.
True.
So I did, when I, when I increased appropriations in the general fund, we did put money into, um, other financing uses. So I'm guessing this comes from another there, and that has.
And then we'll need just under thirteen thousand.
Twelve thousand nine thirty twenty-one for the fire districts.
Well, I can tell you, just looking at this, there isn't over thirteen thousand going to come out of the fire department side that has not already been funded.
So we'll have to, uh. We'll have to, uh, supplemental appropriation for additional funds. Because we have an unappropriated one.
Yeah, I mean, that's all I can say, the fire department has to do that, you're going to have supplemental to increase that.
Which fund would it make?
Well, from your general fund of the fire department, we're okay on the township side because we just reallocated for that and increased the corporations, but Brian's got his budget pretty tight up for year and in all his line items now, see where I can even move money around, so it's going to have to be a supplemental.
Right, right, we'll have to pull some money that we were planning on carrying, we'll reduce the carryover by thirteen.
So what we'll have to do is next month, I know you're going to have to hold it off another month, but you'll have to pass another resolution to increase the corporation. I know it seems.
Well, this quote's going to change.
Well.
We should do a special meeting in a week or so and knock it out, I know.
We've done it before for, uh, for a single item and, you know.
I'm sure it might be even more by then too, just to pay bills in general. Under bills that come along.
I'm fine with that, I mean, I, I have a problem that we've been, I know it's not ideal, but, you know, if we're just covering such a short list of items, you know, of, of morning meeting and it was sometimes easier for everybody to just pop in and get it done. Yeah.
I'm just looking at my calendar, I mean, sometime.
How soon, how soon can we, I don't, two, we're going to turn around for you to be able to, for us to figure out, you know, what the appropriations need to be.
Well, I mean, that's the only thing you're increasing it by is, you know, thirty thousand, isn't that what you said the numbers?
Yeah.
I mean, it only takes me five minutes to type up a resolution, so I mean, you guys can have a meeting as soon as tomorrow, Friday. Yeah, I mean, it shouldn't, it won't take long, that, that, that's the only thing we can do is just strictly that, that's fine.
I could, I could do Friday morning.
I think I'll be out of time Friday, I could do Thursday morning or.
I, I'm fine with that too. That's, I, I mean. Do we want to do, do we, do, do we want to do it in the morning? Is it easier schedule-wise for you guys? That's fine. Uh, what time? Nine, okay, let's do it.
So, we, we made the motion, second, would you agree to vote on this? Let's vote on it, so.
Yeah, seventy thousand two fifty ninety-five with the breakdown, are we discussed?
Correct.
I, I made the motion.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye. And, and I'll give Keith the call. And, yeah, we've got forty-three in hand, right? That way you can give stuff, order.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we're not paying until he, or he does it, so.
Well, we'll have that. He actually did mention he might want to.
Well, that's okay.
He can want that.
I'll be able to let down, you know?
I want a lot of things, but.
So I'm going to put that in the other professional and technical services line, I don't know. The two twenty-three nineteen.
Just twenty-three nineteen. New business. Medina County Clubhouse, the clubhouse approval. Uh, the zoning commission, uh, had a special meeting, uh, Mr. Phillips is here, uh, representing the golf course. We have the drawings here, um. The zoning commission, uh, had, there was a height difference, uh, as far as our code goes, to what they had drawn up. So, uh, they took it back to the architect and lowered it, uh, and then had a special meeting and the commission did the vote unanimously, uh, to approve, um, the, the clubhouse height. That was the only issue that was there.
And then they need approval from us.
And they need approval from us to just convert that. Uh, it's the first page is right there.
Yeah, I would, I would make the motion to approve, uh, the site length of a country club.
I'll second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, we need to build, build, wait, are you not carrying? Or the hall too? Sorry for the wait, I mean.
That's okay.
Uh, thanks.
That's all right, can't even do anything.
Uh, zoning commission, uh, there's position open on, uh, the zoning commission and there's position open on the B Z A. Um, I would like to appoint, uh, the alternates up to fill those slots and take the, the eight, the opening, uh, from the team that, what?
So we have one board position on both that are vacant.
Yes.
Due to residents.
Correct.
But we have two alternates on both boards. Yeah, um, especially given that we've had one for most of the summer, um, and both boards can function as it stands, you know, with the alternates, um. You have an election, kind of, the board may be different next year, may not be different next year, I, I tend them towards leaving, leaving the agencies until the organizational meeting next year. Neither board, neither board is hindered by having alternates seated for the meetings.
Chris, I mean, on the other hand, we've got, uh, from what I hear, really good alternates on both boards as well.
I agree.
And I think they have been, uh, first off, let's, for both of the square stations. I know it's a box, so we want it to own commission.
Yeah, I, I, I'm feeling the same way, but we've done great work and I'd just like to put them on the board myself.
I would agree.
Any more discussion?
No, just simply to clarify, it's not in any way, shape, or form, uh, a value judgment on the quality of any of our alternates that come to see your deficit. Procedurally, I just don't think there's any reason to appoint, to appoint those before January, so, that's it.
That's fine, um, I would, I would move, uh, I would make the motion to, uh, appoint Tim Kusuf at an open position, uh, expiring in December twenty twenty-eight for the zoning commission.
And that was the position vacated by Mr. Burmeyer.
Yes, I'll second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposing, son?
Aye.
Board of Zoning Appeals, open position with expired December twenty twenty-nine, Mr. Fergel. I didn't make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposing, son?
Aye.
All right, next item is Otarma, um, insurance for, uh, the township. The fire, uh, will be coming up next month.
And it'll probably be later, it'll probably be later than that, I talked with Karen today.
Oh, probably today, okay, very.
I talked for a couple weeks. I actually guess November is next month. We, we may have it in time for November meeting, we may not. And she did want me to warn you guys, I guess they're dealing with a new name change at the insurance company, but nothing changes team-wise or they're, they're just going through the name change over there. So when you see that announcement, she's going to be on vacation for two weeks and she didn't want everybody to panic, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 but one of them. Yeah, 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 but one of them, I, I forget which one she said the name was changing on, but she just wanted to give us a heads up that we won't see that, it's still the exact same team that's gonna be in place servicing it, it's just a name change.
Mm-hmm. Any discussion on this? I know the rates were not, but what happened?
And just, uh, the renewal amount was, uh, again, for the township, forty six thousand seven thirty.
Correct.
Seven hundred thirty dollars. Uh, I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second. All who's in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. On the next to the new. Okay. When you want to, uh, go through the ones.
I think for meeting on Friday, there's no reason why I can't review and approve them. You know, review them between now and Friday and Thursday.
Or Thursday, sorry, sorry, sorry.
Between now and Thursday.
So we'll just put them on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, anything else for the board?
How for me?
Oh, we do have, uh, these cemetery rooms that happened, um, two of them.
Yeah, Rachel too.
She put the paperwork down. Okay, good, alright. Uh, there's nothing else of the board.
Oh, actually, you know what? How's it, kinda sneak in on Thursday and briefly chip a lot on, um, the. Yeah, we can answer, agenda just having a. Um, real, I guess, I don't even know if we can do it real quick, um, but we've kind of briefly talked about it at the last meeting. Um, the certificate came out, um, inside village was sixty one hundred dollars in all my forecasts. So.
Correct.
Yeah, well, sometimes you guess well, but, um, like we talked about, that's, um, rather significant increase, um, to the revenues to the township. And I think that, uh, you know, in talking with the auditor's office, as long as we, just like when we did the reallocation inside village, uh, which we probably would need to revisit if we wanted to, one, we probably should just because of the amounts, uh, but two, um, because if we wanna try to allocate those towards anything else, um, but obviously, everybody's dealing with a pretty big hit for property tax values. We just talked about earlier the fact that we have enough money in the bond fund, if we wanted to, we could choose to not collect that levy next year and still make the payment. Now, it does come with the expense of potentially paying it off a year early, so that's something that we need to look at. But also, you know, an increase, it's a hundred eighty seven, a hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars more next year at a minimum. And that's, and that's if the, I think they probably underestimated what it may be as well, so we, we may see a uptick even above that. But I mean, we can look at things like, you know, offsetting some of the police levy, reducing our collection on that, um, you know, we've, we've changed direction, you know, when we, when we passed the fire levy last year, the talk was that we needed an ambulance, which we fully funded this year. So the town is already, already there. We talked about staffing around the clock, which we are doing, three people in the building around the clock. But originally, the talk was a, a big chunk of what we budgeted in, in that levy was for full-time personnel, which I don't know if you guys have had the conversation with Chief yet, but, you know, he's, he's rethinking that thought process because of some of the scheduling issues that come with trying to melt, w- we can't go to a, all full-time department, that's just not even feasible within the budget, um, and some of our neighbors that, that have tried this hybrid model are struggling with being able to backfill hours because the full-time backs take up all the prime shifts and then it's always holidays, weekends, you know, so, so we're looking at a point where, you know, if, if we aren't gonna do that, that's a big chunk of that levy that we're no longer utilizing to what we said we were gonna do. I know, I know Chief has presented the possibility of switching that money towards buying new equipment, and it's definitely something worth considering, but I also think as a board, we need to give some consideration to the fact that we told the public the levy was for one thing. Should we be switching that at this point? Wow.
That's, that's a good point, it's definitely worth discussing, and maybe we would use some of that to, to offset the bond under future check.
Could do that as well.
That's all that I'm thinking about, the bottom line, I assume we can start locating on that better.
And it's a matter of which tech, you know what I mean, like, and that's the thing, it's like, um, you know, the reason that the bond fund has extra money is because it over-collected twenty twenty two. I believe it was the year, it was like seven hundred fifteen thousand, it's now collecting like four twenty six, something like that. Um, so because it over-collected, then that means that the taxpayers that were here in the township in twenty twenty two, which may not still be here for some of them, you know, they got overtaxed. When, you know, do we give that back to the taxpayers that are here now, or do we, do we give that back to the taxpayers that are potentially here in twenty twenty seven, twenty twenty eight? There's arguments for both, but I just think it's something that we need to look at because it's within our ability to.
Right.
If we leave everything the way it is, I think we pull in more money next year than we need to run the township and the fire district, so if we're gonna do that, we better at least have a really good explanation for why, that, that's all.
I can hear.
Um. I think we need to just strongly consider how quickly we can pay off that bond fund. Sure, we'd all like to.
Yeah, that's cool.
Right now, we gotta remember, it's, it's probably making a little bit more.
Well, and that's, and that's, and that's where it's, and that's where it gets to be tough, right? Because, because we, I, I wanna say it's like two and a quarter or something crazy low, I mean, I was looking at it to see the last, the last three years, so from twenty seven through the end of twenty nine, we're only gonna spend forty, but it's, uh, sixty thousand dollars in interest. Which on a three and a half million dollar loan, that's, you know, that's, that's not a, a huge interest savings I'm paying, so because the interest rate's so low, you're right, we, right now, we've got an investment, it's on Riley, four, you know, four point four percent. So we are technically making money, instead of paying it off, we just need to, we need to make sure instead of paying it down, we can pay it off, if it wants to pay it off, then we can stop collecting.
Well. But, but actually.
Well.
As long as the debt's still there, yes, we have to collect. But as we just, I, I guess I hadn't even really thought about it until we just kind of walked through that, but we're, we're talking about paying off the two and a half percent loan with money that we better than four and a half percent, so. Probably not a good idea, I, I mean.
Well, you look at those, those, correct, that's what I'm saying, however, if we can stop collecting the taxes to begin with.
Well, that's why maybe we, maybe we do consider just not collecting that levy this year.
Yeah.
And, and as long as we articulate that to the taxpayers and say, hey, look, this, this is, this is why, right, like, we've got your money invested, we, we've had, at a better rate than what we're paying on the loan, like, it's, I think most people will understand that concept, and probably anybody's gonna get pissed that we take less money out of it.
No.
That the property tax bill goes down a bit if it's only twenty bucks.
For one year, like, if any.
Well. Well, or we could look at, you know, we may be able to have it, you know what I mean, or like, figure out what, what we can reduce it by every year going forward to pay off the rest of it, right? So, alright.
And then to, to be clear though, you're, you're advocating or considering the possibility, of course, wanna make sure of using any of the, the revaluation money, getting an extra. I don't think we'd be allowed to put that on the bond, but if we could.
Probably not, we, we probably, you'd probably have to use fire department, all the things that go over it. So I think, I think we have three, three things that we need to look at. You have the increase in inside village, which we can use for anything within the township, so, and if we can't find like, something that we need to do to benefit the residents through an additional service or, or improved facilities or something along those lines, then we can look at offsetting some of the, the police levy, you know, even if we do roll it back for the entirety of the rest of the term or something along those lines. So that's, that's issue one, um, I think issue two is looking at the bond fund by itself, and whether we can roll that one back a little bit for the remainder, or skip it this year altogether, or, you know, like, something along those lines, and then I think the third one is really analyzing the fire department budget and understanding, you know, do we wanna look at what the actual cost of what we said we were gonna do last night, the ambulance, the staff, and, and like I said, since we've now pulled the full-time staffing, I mean, that was, I wanna say it was close to half of what we thought the increase need was gonna be, so, and we're also sitting in hypersalads, or payments and salaries right now, which is. Truly, so, right, so we, we do have to look at that piece of it, but I guess I'm saying is, do we want to adjust that levy for that, knowing then that we would ultimately potentially have to ask for separate equipment money? Or do we wanna just say, hey, I know we told you that it was gonna be this, this and this, here's why that plan doesn't make any more sense of what we wanna do with it, and then just make that decision. You can argue for both, I just, then I think you'll have people in the, in the township that are like, in the fire district that are like, yeah, we like that, so if there's not new, a new levy, and then we'll be like, people would, you know, no, you said you were gonna do X, you should only do X, and if you want something else, you should ask us for that, so, I, I think those are all conversations that we should be having, um, I know it's the beginning of October, we only have like two regular meetings scheduled, but I do think that that might be one that's worth looking at. It's gonna be lengthy, it'll, it'll take some time, but I think we can prepare some numbers in advance and, and have a substantive conversation on that sooner rather than later, because again, as long as we make those changes, you know, when I talked to Kristen at the auditor's office, um, she said as long as they had it by early January, also maybe early, early to mid-December, they could get to.
Mid-December, probably, maybe later, but, uh, one, on the township side, to get the, uh, allocation, to be realized, Jay, I think that.
For the inside village.
Yeah, it's a very big inside village, probably somewhere else.
Right. Well, you know my thought on that, I, I think all inside village should go to the general fund, because we can also put it to rope a bridge, but, but yes, I mean, and, and, and I'm all for, the sooner we have these conversations, the better, I'm not, you know, there's no reason to pick it out further than we have to, but I was under the impression when I talked to her that as long as it was like early next year, you're good, but she must have been feeling extra nice the day I talked to her, but I think she's got a lot going on, you know, appeals and stuff.
Mm-hmm. She does. Okay, that's good. Anything else?
That's all I meant, sorry.
Alright, uh, public comment.
Nick Tittle, four eighty eight Columbia. First of all, I wanna thank you guys, it's been a pretty productive meeting, and I appreciate, uh, you guys' um, potential detail and everything, um, notice, uh, well, I know, not notice, but we have, uh, a zoning commission position open, as you guys are aware, um, the zoning commission has made a lot of good progress over the past year or two, and, um, I think it's very important to have a full bench. And just wanted to see if you guys would be posting or, and, and open alternate positions to fill that position. With a lead time for people to understand what's going on, get their feedback, and I think it'd be a, a good move to at least start limit, um, candidates, or open position. I don't wanna speak for the BZA, but I, I assume that I live in the same situation.
Yeah, both, uh, both boards now have one alternate position up.
There's no harm at all to starting sooner than later.
Absolutely.
I would say we can start running ads for, for open positions for alternate.
Thank you.
And we'll have, at the same, it's not too really, we'll have, uh, someone's term's gonna expire already this year, like, for.
Absolutely.
Applications for both.
Yeah, I, I, I have a feeling there might be a couple more open positions of hanging in the year, I was on the commission, um, I think it'd be beneficial to get some people somewhat trained. That makes sense. And then, um, the only other thing I wanted to say, you guys were discussing, um, the bond fund and investing the money at a two percent margin compared to what the interest rate is, and quite frankly, I don't need to tax me to invest my money at two percent. I personally prefer to invest my own money at a much larger margin.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Alright, let me see. Anybody else? Alright.
I'll go.
Oh.
Don't cut it in my five minute. Okay, the first thing I wanted to, oh, wait a minute, Lynn Collins, one twenty nine, Jason. Who is taking point on filing a claim on the former fiscal officer's bond to recoup the money that was misappropriated? I don't know if that's the correct, the correct word.
I do miss something during this call, um, we are still waiting on final determination from the, from Opers on, um, one of the four employees, so we don't have a final amount yet to be able to do that, but Sherry and I have been working on that.
Okay, so when do we expect a result?
Sherry just walked out, sorry. But she, she's been in communication with Opers, trying to get the one squared away, because there's some discrepancies over what's been filed, so she's working on, if I understand correctly from the last conversation I had with Sherry on it, um, she is working to figure out what's been reported to Opers because the reports don't all match up, it does require a little research, and unfortunately, she's digging out some, some other things, so I.
It's not top of the list.
Unfortunately, it isn't, um, the downside is, um, until we get it solved, um, potentially interest and penalties are are falling, so we do need to get it done sooner rather than later, so that will be something that I will talk to her about in the future. So hopefully, we'll have an update for you very soon.
And, um, not the last meeting, but the meeting before that we brought up that, uh, Westfield had been, uh, purchased by another bank. And I was wondering what the, and how it affected us and our monies, and I was a little bit confused on the interest rates that we were getting opposed to what we are now getting.
Yeah, uh, I did talk to Westfield about the purchase, and they said commercially, nothing will change. Um, and as far as the interest rate goes, uh, we were making four and a quarter, then the feds made a change, and we got dropped down to four percent.
So we're making four, huh?
Four percent, yeah. Yeah, actually, we just approved the new check, and, uh, will be guaranteed until the feds change it at three point nine five percent.
Okay. And just an observation, and I know there's been a little bit of a rift going on, but, um, it was really hard to hear Sherry on this side of the room, so if she's gonna sit back there, we should give her a mic. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, anybody else? Okay. Kristen, uh, threw this in front of me and forgot to say something earlier, uh, I'll read some of it, your boo bash is Saturday, October twenty eighth, or twenty fifth, from twelve to three, here at the fire station. You wanna add anything, man?
Nope, it's gonna be, um, games and crafts and, um, there'll be different, uh, police departments coming, um, the country club's coming, other different local places, um, the service dogs are coming, there could be puppies. Puppy adoptions coming, uh, lots and lots of fun, lots of fun things, um, there's no trunk or treat, but there will be trick or treating at the different stations with the games and, and crafts, so.
Yeah, come, it's free.
Thank you, thanks Kristen. Alright, motion to adjourn.
I will go do adjourn.
I'll second. All who's in favor, aye?
Aye, aye.
Aye, eight thirty nine.